Meeting to order. Everybody stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll kick the roll.
O'Connor.
Here.
Morrison.
Here.
Alms. DeZiel.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Atkins Hoggitt.
Here.
Hall.
Here.
First up, we have a presentation today, a life-saving award presentation to Deputy Colton Mikla. Chief?
Good evening.
Evening.
Today, we're here to recognize Deputy Colton Mikla for a life-saving award. On July 8th, 2019, about 7:37 PM, Deputy Mikla assisted the Hudson Police Department in the City of Hudson with a medical emergency. In that emergency, he was closer than the Hudson officers and without hesitation responded to assist. Upon his arrival, he was able to immediately administer naloxone to the patient who had overdosed on an unknown substance. As a result of his quick response and assistance to the Hudson Police Department as well as St. Croix EMS, the patient survived the overdose. His efforts did not go unnoticed and his professionalism and dedication to the citizens of St. Croix County is exemplary. On behalf of myself and the Hudson Police Department, I'm bestowing a life-saving award. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Thank you, Deputy. Public hearings. Public hearing for preliminary development plans and a zoning map amendment from PCD, Planned Commercial Development, to PRD III, Planned Residential Development, and a comprehensive plan amendment from General Commercial to Medium Density Residential on the southeasterly quarter of St. Croix County Tax Parcel 236-1975-10-000 Park Place LLC. Is there anyone here that would like to comment on this? Anyone who would like to make a comment? Anyone who would like to make a comment? Anyone who would like to make a comment?
Move to close?
Second.
Got a motion, second to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Discussion possible action on ordinance 11-19, preliminary development plans and a zoning map amendment from PCD, Planned Commercial Development, to PRD III, Planned Residential Development, and a comprehensive plan amendment from the General Commercial to Medium Density Residential on the southeasterly quarter of St. Croix County Tax Parcel 236-1975-10-000 Park Place LLC. Hello?
Good evening, everybody. Park Place LLC is requesting to rezone Lot 12 of the St. Croix Meadows Platte. They're looking to alter the plan a little bit instead of making it just one giant, or I guess not giant, multifamily apartment structure. They would like to make it a variety of different housing types. So instead of just that, they also want to include some single-family housing, row homes, and duplexes. So to do that, they need to change the zoning type and the comprehensive plan type from general commercial to planned residential district.
I move we suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion, second to suspend. Roll call.
Morrison.
Yes.
Alms.
Yes.
DeZiel.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Atkins Hoggitt.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Motion's approved. Rules are suspended.
Move adopt ordinance 11-19.
Second.
Motion, second to adopt for discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Thanks, Tiffany. Comments and suggestions from citizens present? This is your opportunity to come up and voice your opinion, concern on anything that is not on the agenda. If people are here for something that is on the agenda, then if you would wait until that comes up, I'd appreciate it. Right.
Well, the progress continues on Vine Street. I'm pleased to report. Soon, the final paving will be done. And I would like to express my desire that where we take our bikes down from our house and our neighbors, all the way down the hill, it's nice not to run into cars. And so it was about three years ago when the lower half of Vine Street was redone. And there was a lot of discussion as to whether or not we should have bike lanes or parking. And for the last couple of years, we, of course, have had the parking on the north side, no bike lanes at all on the whole stretch. Well, I'm one who rides my bicycle up Vine Street many, many times. And when I go up the hill, I tend to wobble. And when I'm wobbling, it's also a very narrow way for the cars to go past me, too. So I'm at some risk continuously when I go up. So since the line drawing hasn't been done yet on the upper portion of Vine Street from Ninth Street all the way up to the high school, I would think now would be a cost-effective time to consider putting in the bike lanes there. And then if the planning council could once again review whether to have parking or bike lanes from Ninth Street down to Fourth, that would be, I guess I would support at least that to be reviewed again, too. Because when the bikers go by my house, they're flying, and then they hit Ninth Street and they go over the top there, and if there's a parked car right there, we all know that that's where a tragic accident happened a couple of years ago. So please reconsider adding bike lanes back to that area. It would be at least safe for the Schoberg family and probably for a lot of my neighbors, too. That's it. And the goats, just so you know, the fence went down, but the wild animals did not escape. I noticed that a deer had run through the gate, much to the chagrin of the deer because the fence is electrified. But the goats were still content with eating the buckthorn, so they had not escaped. So no news is good news. Thanks.
Excuse me. Excuse me. Would you state your name again, please?
Sorry. Roy Schoberg, 1108 Vine Street.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yes.
Marion?
Marion Weber, 604 Grandview Drive. Approximately three years ago, I endeavored with the city to pursue bike lanes on Vine Street. They were approved, and then a special meeting was called a week later. They were approved in a full house of people who approved of it. There was a lot of conversation prior to that approval. There was a lot of neighborhood involvement. There was only one person who didn't approve, and to me, that person said that they didn't approve because they wanted to have the sidewalks widened. So they wanted to have bicycles on Vine Street, but they wanted the sidewalks widened. We had a gentleman come down who was from the League of American Bicycleists, and his job was to evaluate cities for, I guess, safe cities or similar situation as Wisconsin Street. And he made recommendations regarding Vine Street. I actually have all kinds of emails around this subject. A week later, the mayor came back in from vacation and called a special meeting, which everyone in town, the newspaper had reported that there were going to be bike lanes on Vine Street. And so that, everyone thought it was all covered. And then because no one attended that meeting except that one person who lived there and a person who couldn't get to his driveway because of an easement across a property that he was blocked from using for whatever reason. At that time, we were talking about doing a bump out by the church. The church council approved of that bump out, so that was part of that process at the same time. And some people had the misconception that we were talking about only having a bike lane that went up to Seventh Street or Ninth Street or something. But that's what we were talking about because that's where the improvements were. The bike lane obviously would have gone all the way through Vine Street as far as marking was concerned, because there would be no change in the size of the road or the construction, but the line markings would be there. At the time that the situation, the decision was reversed, the comment was made by the council, and it's part of the records, I don't know if any of you recall it, that this could be looked at again in two years. In that, in this period of time, we've had a change of staff, a considerable change in staff, and we've had a holitious, holitious, awful, horrible thing going on as far as parking and decisions around parking and where cars should be parked in Hudson. And Vine Street has been made a parking lot. I'm very familiar with the accident that happened. It was horrifying because I know the backstory on that car that that child hit, and it's tragic that that car was there. And I know the person who put their car there felt very badly. It was a protest move. And so I would love to have bike lanes on Vine Street. It's the obvious way that people travel, just like the reason the cars travel. There is room on Vine Street to have bike lanes. And at this point, it would break a habit because now cars have been invited to park there, and they do park there. Prior to that, there was one car that parked on Vine Street. So I would highly recommend that we revisit bike lanes on Vine Street because it just makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Any other comments? Any other comments? Close that portion of the agenda. Consent agenda?
Consent agenda items for tonight's meeting are as follow. Approve that July 15, 2019, regular common council meeting minutes. Approve the claims in the amount of $376,216.10. Approve the operator license application submitted by Maxwell Dotseth and Jessica Sveen. Approve the 2020 common council meeting schedule.
Can I pull that one, Jim?
Yes. Approve the amusement device license application submitted by Gary Anderson, Twin States. Place on file the July 9, 2019, Public Utilities Commission meeting minutes. Approve the general procedures for alley paving projects.
Please pull that item.
Approve general procedure. Whoops. I'll hold it. Approve general procedures for alley paving projects. That was pulled. Approve general procedures for curb replacement projects. Approve funds in the amount of $14,953.54 from the 2019 Sidewalk Capital Improvement Fund for installation of steps for access to Prospect Park.
We need to pull that one, please.
Pull this one?
Yes, aye.
Okay. Approve the reallocation of funds from the 2019 Street Maintenance Capital Improvement Fund in the amount of $15,000 for the purchase of spray patch materials. Approve the use of funds from the 2019 Street Maintenance Capital Improvement Fund in the amount of $11,900 for the letter of engagement with Bolton &amp; Mink for the development of plans and specifications to reconstruct Walnut Street from First Street to Bridge. Approve the removal of four parking stalls on Commercial Street between Second Street and the Williams Parking Lot, North Side. Approve the purchase of a used pickup truck, up to $15,000 with funding from the 2019 Public Works Equipment Capital Improvement Fund. Approve a certified survey map, CSM, for St. Croix County Parcel 236-1975-16-000 Gerard Development LLC. Approve setting a public hearing date for a zoning map amendment from R2 to Family Residential to B3 Central Business and a comprehensive plan amendment from Single and Two Family Residential to Downtown Commercial at 821 and 825 Second Street and 828 First Street, CMM Investments LLC. Approve a fence easement agreement at 223 Liberty Street, Brad Miller. Approve an LOE with SEH on 11th Street, Bridge Expansion Study. Approve an LOE with SEH on Vine Street's Safety Prelim Options, $18,300. Approve an LOE with SEH on Carmichael Road Concept, Vine to Cooley, $40,000. Approve an LOE with CA on Assessment Mapping Project. Discussion and possible action on memorandum of agreement between City of Hudson, St. Croix EMS, and Lakeview Hospital Ambulance Services regarding a coverage agreement whereby Lakeview Hospital Emergency Medical Services Department will provide additional coverage with the St. Croix EMS service area as needed under the terms of the agreement. Approve the event application submitted by Jerry Tresseltz for a block party located at Third Street between Pine and Division Streets for Sunday, August 25, 2019, from 12 to 4 PM. Approve the event application submitted by Sportsman for the Boundary Waters for the 2019 Brew Fest event located at the Lakefront Park on September 21, 2019.
One comment. On you, it should be approve that agreement. That memorandum of agreement.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion, second to approve consent agenda with items D, G, and I being pulled. Discussion? Oh, I'm sorry. Roll call.
Morrison.
Yes.
Alms.
Yes.
DeZiel.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Atkins Hoggitt.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Motion's approved. Item D. Jim?
No, that was me, I think.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Paul? So just a couple of thoughts. If we could possibly move the March 23 date to March 30, that would help my schedule. And then the organizational meeting on Tuesday, the 21st of April. If we could start it like an hour later, at 8:00 PM instead of 7:00 PM. But I also realize the world doesn't revolve around me, so I'm just throwing it out to the group.
I move we keep the schedule as is.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Got a motion, a second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Item G.
I defer to.
Yeah, I reviewed that alley procedure, and the procedure's changed in the statute. So the petition procedure is fine just as a tool to allow residents to notify the city that they are interested in having their alley paved. But then the city will need to follow the special assessment procedures required by statute and then required by city policy. So all I would like to do is change the language in that first paragraph to explain that and refer to the state statutory procedures and the city policies. So the procedure will remain the same as far as residents submitting petitions, but in terms of how you go through the special assessment procedure, we have to follow statute. And I discussed it with the Public Works Director this afternoon, so he's aware of it and agrees.
You okay, Jim?
Yeah, what she said.
Yeah. So we'll circle that back to Public Works and then come back here again? Or? Well, I thought, I mean, you can approve it just with that, you know, making revisions as I described, because I think that will reflect what the Public Works Committee wanted.
I would move we approve with the revisions suggested.
Okay, motion, second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Item G.
I defer to.
Yeah, I reviewed that alley procedure, and the procedure's changed in the statute. So the petition procedure is fine just as a tool to allow residents to notify the city that they are interested in having their alley paved. But then the city will need to follow the special assessment procedures required by statute and then required by city policy. So all I would like to do is change the language in that first paragraph to explain that and refer to the state statutory procedures and the city policies. So the procedure will remain the same as far as residents submitting petitions, but in terms of how you go through the special assessment procedure, we have to follow statute. And I discussed it with the Public Works Director this afternoon, so he's aware of it and agrees.
You okay, Jim?
Yeah, what she said.
Yeah. So we'll circle that back to Public Works and then come back here again? Or? Well, I thought, I mean, you can approve it just with that, you know, making revisions as I described, because I think that will reflect what the Public Works Committee wanted.
I would move we approve with the revisions suggested.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion, second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Item I, we're pulling because it's been referred to the committee. Is that right?
Yep.
So we don't really need to discuss that any further?
Yeah.
Is that right?
Moving it to Public Safety Committee. Right.
Right. Okay. All right. Discussion possible action on ordinance 10-19, preliminary development plans and a rezoning amendment from AR Agricultural Residential to PRD III, Planned Residential Development at St. Croix County Tax Parcel 020-1085-30-000, Heart Development LLC.
Move to approve as presented in this lengthy and very useful report on the history of this project with the Exhibits A and B, which basically, well, that's the end of the motion. Exhibit B is the defining one that limits it to a three-story building, 45 feet high.
We've got a motion. I'm sorry, did I hear a second?
Second.
Motion, second. Mike? Anything? Is any discussion?
So I wasn't, I'm still catching up a little bit from last meeting. I wasn't here. So just to clarify, it's three on the map, three stories. Am I correct about this? And then the traffic piece, and you guys talked about this, I saw the tape last week, but just that traffic on Vine and Carmichael. My understanding is the developer will put about 1.4, 1.5 million to help us solve that, widen those lanes and whatnot. So just my question is, how comfortable are you, Mike, with that traffic plan for making sure the lanes are widened and whatnot?
Earlier in finance, the committee approved, and then ultimately here at council, the parallel process of looking at Vine and Carmichael. You know, we know a lot about Carmichael already as per the Carmichael Road Corridor study. This next step gets us to a point where we're comfortable, obviously with the four-lane build-out, that it would be able to accommodate the traffic that is contemplated as part of this development. You know, Vine, for the pedestrian safety piece, I think we've got a good plan in place with SEH to work towards trying to find some good, safe, reasonable solutions. Obviously, there's a cost to that, or there will be a cost that's identified. That's not something that would be included in that 1.5 million dollars that you referenced, but would certainly be something that the council will have to consider how to best approach.
I think in addition to that, at the last meeting, I objected considerably to moving ahead with the development plan until we had movement in place to take care of both the pedestrian and the car issues. And two things. One is we've got some pretty good letters of engagement. We've got things we're going to work on and what we're going to work on and what we're looking at. And the other thing is that it became apparent in some discussions that while if that development was there today, we couldn't handle it. But by the time the development is producing traffic that's going to affect us, we will have some things in place. And so it might be a little, some hopscotching, but we'll be catching up with that. We have, I think we have the plans in place to do that. We'll have to pull the trigger when the studies are done, but I don't think there's any, I would hope there's no doubt that that's going to happen.
Point of order clarification, we're in our ordinance, so do we need to suspend the rules?
Didn't we have the first reading before?
I don't think we had.
Oh, there wasn't a first reading.
June 17.
No.
So we didn't suspend.
So we need to suspend, yeah.
So I move to suspend the rules.
Move to suspend the rules. Second.
Got a motion, second to suspend the rules. Roll call.
Morrison.
Yes.
Alms.
Yes.
DeZiel.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Atkins Hoggitt.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Motion's approved. Rules are suspended. Renew the motion.
Do you want to state your motion again?
I move that we adopt ordinance 10-19. Is that the one we're working on here? Following the Exhibits A and B as the principal guidelines.
Second.
Motion, a second. Discussion?
Just want, I'm sorry, go ahead. I want to clarify, so we're doing both A and B in this? Or are we adopting both 10-19?
Attachments A and B, I'm talking about.
10-19. Okay. Thank you.
I was a little confused, and I'm still catching up, about the height of the building, so I wanted to ask the developers. When I had left last time, I know we sent it back to planning, and I think it came out of planning as a four-story with businesses in the bottom. And then, but what I want to figure out from you guys is, did you have a preference on three or four, or did it matter to you at all? Because my impression was last time it didn't make a whole lot of difference. Okay. Okay, that's what I want to hear. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Discussion possible action on ordinance 9-19, preliminary development plans and a rezoning amendment from AR Agricultural Residential to PRD III, Planned Residential Development, and B2, General Business at St. Croix County Tax Parcel 020-1085-20-000, Heart Development LLC.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Motion, second to suspend. Roll call.
Morrison.
Yes.
Alms.
Yes.
DeZiel.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Atkins Hoggitt.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Motion's approved. Rules are suspended.
Move to adopt ordinance 9-19.
Second.
Motion, second to approve. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Thanks, Tiffany. Discussion possible action on the sale of St. Croix EMS that we've already decided to.
Yeah, that was just a point of information for anyone who wasn't here, that it's covered in our procurement policy and that the council decision can be done in a variety of ways.
Okay. Ordinance 12-19, discussion of possible action on adopting ordinance 12-19, adding section 12.4 to chapter 235 of the traffic code.
This was unanimously passed out of public safety.
This is the no hands, or hands-free.
Hands-free, which is a very important, I think, good step for the City of Hudson, hopefully as the rest of the state of Wisconsin. I don't know if you want to say anything, but I will suspend the rules at this point.
I'll second.
Motion, second to suspend the rules. Roll call.
Morrison.
Yes.
Alms.
Yes.
DeZiel.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Atkins Hoggitt.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
I move we adopt ordinance 12.
Motion's approved.
Adopt ordinance 12-19.
Second.
Okay, motion, a second. Yes, sir.
Sounds good to me.
Anything you want to say?
We're successful in Minnesota. I've already started, I had an interview with Wisconsin Public Radio to talk about what we're doing here, and a television station out of Madison. I plan on using some of the local radio stations to talk about the new ordinance and the newspaper as well.
Sure. And once again, for the record, if you could give us your name and address, please.
Tom Galtz, 763 Aldro Road, Hudson, Wisconsin.
Thanks. What's the penalty?
The bond schedule's at $98.
Okay. Does this go against, is it points or anything on a driver's license?
Not at this point.
Of course, that would be state, wouldn't it? Okay.
The police department plans to do an education program, publicize the adoption of this ordinance and educate the public on what it requires and so forth, so people will be made aware.
Good.
When will this go into effect?
Upon publication.
And how does it compare to the Minnesota ordinance? It would seem important that they would be identical.
I don't know if they're identical. This one is based on ordinances adopted by a couple other municipalities in Wisconsin, and one has gone through litigation and been affirmed, and so we modeled it on that. It's consistent with some state statutes. So I think it's basically the same, but there might be some nuances. I'm just not that familiar with the Minnesota one.
Is there a possibility for increased fines for subsequent violations?
I don't know if, I mean, yes, what the ordinance has.
Sure. And once again, for the record, if you could give us your name and address, please.
Tom Geltz, 763 Aldro Road, Hudson, Wisconsin.
Thanks. What's the penalty?
The bond schedule's at $98.
Okay. Is, does this go against, is it points or anything on a driver's license?
Not at this point.
Not at this point. Of course, that would be state, wouldn't it? Okay.
The police department plans to do an education program, publicize the adoption of this ordinance, and educate the public on what it requires and so forth, so people will be made aware.
Good.
When will this go into effect?
Upon publication.
And how does it compare to the Minnesota ordinance? It would seem important that they would be identical.
I don't know if they're identical. This one is based on ordinances adopted by a couple other municipalities in Wisconsin, and one has gone through litigation and been affirmed, and so we modeled it on that. It's consistent with some state statutes. So I, I think it's basically the same, but there might be some nuances. I'm just not that familiar with the Minnesota one.
Is there a possibility for increased fines for subsequent violations?
I don't know if, I mean, yes, the, what the ordinance establishes is a range of, of a penalty between, I don't recall, I mean, it's quite a wide range, and the municipal court establishes the bond schedule. So I don't, did she, did the judge do a second offense increase, or no? Chief?
I don't believe at this time there was a second offense indication, but we can always ask her about it.
Yeah, and that can be done just through the judge approving it and then council approval.
Chief, as long as you're there, can you just talk about it from an enforcement standpoint?
Well, enforcement standpoint, that's where it becomes a little more difficult with the ordinance is being a little bit different than state law. But that's why, like Kathy addressed, is that we're gonna, we're gonna have to have educational campaign. So, I mean, pretty much every traffic stop that we make, we'll be handing out little pamphlets that talk about this new ordinance, we'll get with the paper, social media. We're gonna try and put it out there as much as we can so that people can be aware.
Okay.
One more question, chief. Will we be starting that even as close as tomorrow at National Night Out with pamphlets, or is it ready?
Well, I don't think I'll have them printed in time, but...
Okay.
I wasn't gonna spend a lot of money printing something until it passed.
Sure, sure. I didn't know if it was something...
As soon as we can get something, I've got a template all ready to go, I just gotta take it to a printer and have it done.
Fantastic.
Do you all know the backstory on, on the plight that he's...
Yes.
So you don't need...
I don't know the backstory.
If you want to, I think it's important that he executive summary, the reason you're standing here today.
Right. My name's Tom Geltz, my daughter, Megan Geltz, and was killed in a distracted driving-related crash right across the river on Highway 95 in just south of Stillwater. She was pregnant at the time of the crash, so we, I lost a grandson as well, and she is a three-year-old girl who has to grow up now without her mom because, because of that. And I've spent a lot of time working in Minnesota on the hands-free law there, and we wanted to increase penalties with that, hands-free. The increased penalties bill didn't go through, but there's still work to be done there. And I've reached out to Senator Shachner and Shannon Zimmerman locally here, and I know that there's some traction there with some other representatives across the state, so as the word gets out more, that'll, you know, increase awareness from the legislative standpoint, and hopefully we'll have a state law soon. I hope to get it within a year, which is, I think, fairly optimistic, but I'm, I am optimistic on that. And this helps tremendously, so thank you very much.
No, I want to thank you for your efforts. Very brave of you to continue this good work after such a loss.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motions approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anybody, anything?
I just wanted to put a plug in for tomorrow's National Night Out in the Lakefront Park starting at 5:00. Should be a really fun time. Support our public safety departments. Come and have fun.
Cool. Thank you. Anybody else? All right, discussion, possible action on convening in a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.85 Sub 1 Sub C to consider employment compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility relating to City of Hudson-St. Croix EMS employees pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.85 Sub 1 Sub E to deliberate regarding possible agreements with St. Croix EMS employees where competitive or bargaining reasons require.
Move to go into closed session.
Second.
A motion, second to go into closed session, roll call.
Morrison?
Yes.
Alms?
Yes.
DeZiel?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Atkins Hoggit?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Motion's approved, we will go into closed session across the hall. We are back in open session.
I have a motion. I move that for the EMT who has military obligations will not be counted in computing her average hours per week.
Second.
Motion, a second, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motions approved.
I have another motion for the F. Full-time paramedic hours per week will be now 40 hours at regular time and eight hours at OT, consistent with the current schedule.
Second.
Motion, second, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motions approved.
I make the motion that the agreements for all the full-time employees be revised to give them the option of a cash payment instead of health insurance for the balance of the year.
Second.
A motion, a second, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motions approved.
I make the motion that we direct the staff and the mayor to look into options for access to recertification classes for all St. Croix EMS employees.
Second.
Motion, second, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motions approved.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion, then a second to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we stand adjourned, thanks, everybody.